Good evening. I have seven o'clock and I'll call a meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening we have Dr. Rob Lindstedt from Principal at Sunrise Christian Academy to lead us in prayer. Dr. Lindstedt.
James, Chapter four, verse six says this, "But God gives more grace; wherefore he says, 'God resisteth the proud, but gives grace unto the humble.'" Let's pray. Father God, we come to you tonight and we thank you for the grace of God, and we confess that we're needy people, but we're also thankful that the grace of God exceeds our need all of the time. Father, we pray tonight for our children and our families. We pray for their safety, for their protection. We pray, Father, for their, their success in our community. Father, we pray for our civil servants, for our policemen, for our firemen. Father, we pray that you'll protect them and reward their families for their service. Father, we pray for our government, pray for our local government, our state government, our federal government. Father, we pray that you'll give them wisdom. Father, we pray that our treatment of each other might be kind and show the grace of God to all. Father, we thank you also for the fact that salvation comes to us by the grace of God, the grace of God that allowed Jesus Christ to come on this earth to live a perfect life, to go to the cross and die and resurrect again. Father, we thank you for the grace of God that gives us salvation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have a proclamation on severe weather awareness week, and Mr. Greg David is going to read that for us.
Severe weather awareness week 2023. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas severe weather awareness week is March sixth through 10th, 2023, and whereas severe thunderstorms that bring damaging winds, lightning, flash floods and tornadoes, and floods frequent the spring and summer Kansas landscape and have often placed lives and property in jeopardy. And whereas by taking reasonable precautions, Bel Air residents can reduce the loss of life and property, and also decrease the effects of severe weather on our local resources and economy. And whereas the Governor's Division of Emergency Management, the National Weather Service and the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, have joined together urging all citizens to prepare for severe weather and to educate themselves on safety strategies. Therefore, in official recognition of this statewide event, Jim Benage, Mayor of the City of Bel Air, does hereby proclaim March sixth through 10th, 2023, severe weather awareness week in Bel Air.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is determine agenda additions. Are there any additions to the agenda? And then I'll move on to items seven, consent agenda. So I want to make a change here. So this consent agenda minutes, contains the minutes from February seventh regular meeting as well as the February ninth special council meeting. I'm also requesting that in order to save some time on the agenda, we move to the consent agenda, item eight D, which is related to Elk Creek Third Edition Engineering Agreements with K E Miller for the design construction staking of the water distribution system, sanitary sewer, collection system and street and storm sewer. And also item eight H, the engineering agreement with Garver for the design construction staking and project administration observation for storm water and paving improvements in Aurora Park and Cozy Drive.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to discussions and approval appropriations ordinance. So this cycle contains several payments related to capital improvement projects that only, that total $1.2 million. It also includes $35,000 for new meter service installations, $20,000 to Bel Air Chamber, and $10,000 for Axon body camera payment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I'll make a motion to accept the appropriations ordinance 23-03.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We have no city requested appearances this evening. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak tonight? Yes. Thank you. Rebecca Armstrong. Yep. I think you know, just state your name, address, and we give you three minutes.
Rebecca Armstrong, 4306 North Rushwood, Bel Air. And once again, I'm up before you. Thank you for your service. I definitely appreciate it, though I may not sound like it. There's a lot of sacrifice for all of you. I come for, come before you today to express my concern about the recent, recent growth in Bel Air. The Central Park area of Bel Air grew slowly with a well-designed intent to create a community for people that could walk, they could walk, were connected to the city hall and parks, a swimming pool, open spaces and a lake they could walk around. I've been driving through the new developments. These largely are rental properties, duplexes. A good number of these duplexes. Almost all of them are duplexes. It's hard to know the exact number because it's really hard to get the numbers from the website. There are no parks or accessible open spaces. They, the, there are not connected sidewalks. Long cultivated sacks have no sidewalks at all. These are not places for young families to raise their children. It's very dangerous, those cars going up and down. I want young families to be able to live here comfortably, affordably, a place they can call home. I want to live in a community where it is safe and easy to walk, run, ride my bike. It's, it saddens me when a young teacher in our community left because it was unaffordable. It saddens me when a young mother tells me she doesn't teach her child how to ride a bike because there's no sidewalks for her to do so. At $1,700 to over 2,000 for these new duplexes, few, if any, young people can afford to move in. Many that can will be transient, not permanent. Walkable towns, open spaces, parks, community access are, all are things people seek. I do hope that there is more consideration for sustainability, walkability, livability, affordability, and most of all, community. That is what I want from the community I live in, and I believe most people want that. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to public hearing. So this evening we have Bayside Development Project. This is a, purpose of this public hearing is to give property owners and other interested parties the opportunity to speak on the proposed industrial revenue bond and associated exemption from ad valorem taxes for Bayside Development. I hereby open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please move to the podium, speak in the microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes in the time, interest of time. This development is a 120 acre warehouse development in the Sunflower Commerce Park. Certainly.
This is a first. I've heard of it. It's really hard to get this information from the city. It's not readily available. I would like to know what the EPA report was. I didn't hear any open, anything over 100 acres, according to the EPA site, has to have an EPA community comment period. Has that taken place?
I'm not aware of that. This was on the agenda last city council meeting, and this is the second step of that. Last city council meeting, we approved publishing for the, the public meeting, so.
It's really hard to keep up on this information, and it's not being sent out easily. When you go onto the site, it's really hard to keep up on it. It would be nice if these things were put in the Bel Air breeze in a more comprehensive way with a little bit more time because it takes a long time to figure this out, to learn. And I think we all want a better, safer community. I have no idea what to say about Bayside Development. 120 acres, my understanding it's supposed to have an EPA community comment period. I never saw anything like that come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the Bayside Development Project? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Smith. We'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing is closed. Move on to council member reports. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. Smith.
I have no report.
Mr. Dean, David.
Mr. David has no report. Thank you.
Mr. Dean.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few items. Just wanted to start out with the K254 Corridor Association meeting. Our next meeting is this Friday. It'll actually be hosted here at the Community Room here in City Hall, and all are welcome to attend. That's going to be providing an update. I think the speaker is the Greater Wichita Partnership, so, and I believe the topic is Integra. So they'll be visiting a little bit about that company and their impact on our local community. The next item I wanted to make sure to mention was the Bel Air Chamber lunch meeting. Next Wednesday, March 1st is the next lunch meeting for that. And the guest speaker is from Senator Jerry Moran's office. So if you're interested to hear updates from their office, that would be a good opportunity, also to network with business and citizens in Bel Air. Next thing I wanted to add was I wanted to thank Michael White, who's the Executive Director of KCA, Kansas Contractors Association. He submitted proponent testimony to House Bill 2303, supporting efforts for the House Water Committee to stand up the Water Technical Assistance Fund and the Water Projects Fund. This shows the needed focus on critical infrastructure investment in our state and local communities, and I appreciate him doing that. And then the last thing, I attended the Central Park HOA annual meeting over, over the weekend, and there were several items that were worthy to note for city stuff, so I've passed on some of those to staff to follow up on. That's all I have.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you, Mayor. Only thing I wanted to mention before we meet again is Resurrection Church up at 48th and Woodlawn is hosting their next blood drive. My husband and I went over there back in November. It's an easy process. You can go online and reserve your time and not have to go downtown or find another drive. So if you're inclined and in the health to donate, please consider that on March 4th from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did sign up already, so thank you. Okay, so Mayor's report, last week I talked about Bel Air Chamber of Commerce taking over our, or we talked about it, I didn't, by myself, taking over a marketing website and brochure project. So I did visit with the Executive Committee of the Chamber on Thursday, and they are interested in doing this, but need to work out logistics for managing it. They do not have the resources to do that today. So they also like the idea of working with Northeast Magnet High School. I also mentioned, it was also mentioned that interns, WSU generally only take internships in hopes of going to work for the organization which, once they graduate. So pursuing an intern for the website brochure project would not be beneficial since we have no job to offer such a person once the internship is complete. Also Gary O'Neil and I did meet with Northeast Magnet this morning about, about working on a brochure. They would not be able to do any work on the website because the school term ends in May, so we're looking at other options on that. Did you see the insert in the January Water Utility, January Utility Bill? Lots of good information, and it helps explain what goes on in the utility bill. We often hear that our water bills are high, but these utility bills are not just water. They include sewer, storm water management fee, an EPA required protection fee, recycling fee, and at your option, your trash service. I have heard several positive comments about this insert, so great job, Bel Air staff, for putting this together in a clear, concise and understandable manner. Utility Advisory Committee will be touring the Waste Connections Recycle Facility in Hutchinson on May 10th. So please let the UCA Chairman, Art Tenbrink, know if you would like to join the UCA on this tour. They're going to have to live in the size because they can't take too big of a group. I did join them in UCA, UCA a few years ago on this tour, and I learned a lot about what they do and the recycling process. And I understand Waste Connections is now using robots to do much of the sorting of the recyclable materials, so it looks like it'd be an interesting tour. Saturday, February 10th, I became aware of Senate Bill 47 in Topeka. This bill would impose a statewide ban on plastic bags and numerous other similar item issues. It is very broad. While I personally have always thought plastic bags were a silly idea, especially if you're looking for products that are ecologically friendly, this bill should not be in Kansas Legislature. The bill violates Kansas Constitutional Home Rule. Local communities should be making these types of decisions, not Topeka or Washington DC. It is in an email to Senate Commerce Committee Chair Rene Erickson stating my opposition to this bill. The Kansas Senate Federal State and Affairs Committee passed out Senate Bill 210 favorably. They did that this morning on a vote of five to four. This bill allows candidates running for local office to note their party affiliation on the ballot. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's a good idea. It would keep federal employees and many military personnel from running for local office as it makes these elections partisan. And I believe it is against the Hatch Act for such people to run for partisan elective office. So contact your state senator if you want to weigh in on this bill. Please consider, continue to patronize Los Campos and Dollar General. These two businesses continue to be impacted by woodlawn construction. I did see they poured cement for the woodlawn approach to Los Campos this morning, so making some progress there. That's good. The K96 Project is holding a second phase, a second public meeting on March 2nd from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Great Plains Nature Center Auditorium located at 2332 East 29th Street. So during the meeting, the design team will discuss preliminary design alternatives associated with the project and seek your feedback. This is mostly a repeat of the information that were presented at February 2nd meeting. It is a great opportunity to learn about the project if you are not able to attend on February 2nd. The improvement proposals on this project will be a great benefit to Bel Air citizens. And I won't restate the blood drive because Ms. Hamburg did a fine job with that, so I'll ask the city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody that for development projects that are ongoing, once they enter the planning commission process, anybody can request a record of what that development will look like, site plan, any of the materials that the city had, has are usually open records. Sometimes we are limited in giving out the engineer's drawings, but most of the time the engineers are open to that. So any development is available through that process. There is also, our official city newspaper is the Ark Valley News. And so that is where any publication that has to happen on regarding developments will happen there. I think the, the city did a cost study and the publication frequency study, and it just seemed the Ark Valley News was better because it publishes more frequently than the Breeze and it was more affordable for our residents. So that's where all publications on developments are, and anybody can get, file a records request and, and get the information we have on ongoing developments. Mayor, you covered what's going on in the Senate and the House nicely. Only thing I would add is a, maybe about a month ago, we talked about the House bill affecting how cities can weigh in on development within the three mile radius of a city. Both of those bills, they showed up in two different forms. Both of those bills have died. However, there is a Senate interest in reviving that bill through their Senate process, but our, our lobbyists feel like it's, it's been, there's been a good, a lot of support in preventing that, so we're already ready to respond if the Senate does get a bill out of committee on, on extra territorial jurisdiction of cities, so.
Thank you. And they're running to a deadline here this week, is that right, for, for getting those bills passed?
I'm not absolutely sure, but.
All right. There's a rule, they have to pass them through one chamber at a certain date or it dies automatically, but I don't know what that rule exactly is, what that date is, so. Okay, thank you. All right, move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Since there was a question about the Bayside Development, I'll go ahead and explain that for the citizens tonight. What you're considering and what the, the public hearing was about is related to industrial revenue bonds. So it's basically the financing of that project, and that's all that you're considering and all that you're acting on. Now, the actual development of that will go through the process of the planning commission and then to you, and there'll be another public hearing, and that's where it'll actually be designed, streets, EPA, all of those types of reports will be done through that process. And that, I don't know yet when that will go to the planning commission for consideration. Last I heard that he, the developer was working with an engineering company to start designing that, laying out all that process. So that'll come at a later point, and so tonight you're just considering the financing of the project.
So all the questions that Ms. Armstrong was asking about the EPA review, that's to come yet.
Yeah, yeah. So she'll have the opportunity to, to hear about that and find out about all that when that process goes through. And it'll start at the planning commission and then it'll come to you.
Thank you for clarifying that because I was completely blank on that. I just had no idea.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. Item A is a consideration and resolution for Bayside Development. They're planning 120 acres in a commercial park containing 10 warehouses ranging in size from 80,000 to 230,000 square feet. That 230,000 would be the largest spec warehouse in the region. There's a slightly smaller one being done down in southern, down like Hayesville. I'm not sure the exactly location of it. It's a Lang Development, but this will be the largest one planned so far. The exact location on the north side of 53rd is next to Epic Sports and about halfway between Webb and Greenwich. At our February 7th meeting, the city council approved a letter of intent to issue an IRB, and the next step in the issuance is a public hearing, which was held earlier, and a resolution. So Gilmore and Bell, Ms. Sarah Steele is here to explain the resolution and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, good to be here this evening. Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell, and we're bond counsel to the city. We're here this evening to simply take an additional action to the letter of intent that you approved last meeting that authorizes up to $150 million in bonds and allows for a up to 10-year, 100% property tax exemption as well as a sales tax exemption on the materials that are going into the construction project. So those are really the two primary benefits of what they're seeking through this process. This is the first step in the process toward completion of, I assume, each warehouse. We will come back to the city with, with an ordinance that actually authorizes the issuance of these bonds. So this will be an ongoing process for a while. I would be happy to answer any further questions.
Remember the last time you were here, you said that this was like a stair step type of thing. You'll, once one warehouse is started, then we'll, we'll release the bonds for that. And then when the second, start a second one, there'll be a new release of bonds. And then when the second, start a second one, there'll be a new release of bonds for that.
I, I believe that to be the case, but who knows what the circumstances may be. They may combine two.
Yeah.
Into a single bond issue.
With something like that, we'll, we'll, probably won't do the whole project all in one box. Okay.
No, that is, that is the only certainty that I heard out of the developers was that it will be built over time.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Just a follow-up question. I know last time when you were here and we discussed it, there was, uh, there was a, a paragraph that indicated, uh, minimum investment over, I think it was a five-year period of $40 million. I assume that's still a part of the, the agreement that we're moving forward with.
Yes, this certainly incorporates the letter of intent that you have in place and that will, will stay in effect. So this won't modify that in the least.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions related to the, uh, Bayside Development IRB? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to accept a resolution of the governing body of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, determining the advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of multiple warehouse and manufacturing facilities to be located in the city and authorize execution of related documents and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion or I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. This motion carries five to zero. So item B is consideration of approving a second five years of total, so for a total of 10 years of tax payment for Wickham Glass. So the city issued an IRB for Wickham Glass in 2017. The letter of intent required Wickham to meet an investment of $5 million and 19 full-time personnel by the fourth year. The tax abatements were for a total of 10 years, but required approval for the second five years if the investment and new staff met the requirements of the LOI. Wickham has provided the city manager with proof that the requirements were met. So are there any questions to staff or bond counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the second five years of tax abatements for the 2017 Wickham Glass IRB and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. I M C is, uh, order vacating a portion of platted, uh, building setback line. So the property owner at 4031 North Harding, I believe he's in the audience today, this evening, is requesting a 25-foot setback vacation to construct a detached garage. Planning Commission considered the application for a vacation of a 50-foot setback to a 25-foot setback at their February meeting. A public hearing was held with no one speaking. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission discussed the application and determined the 50-foot setback is no longer needed and the reduced setback was a reasonable request that met the criteria for review in the city subdivisions code. So the Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the request to vacate the front building setback. And is the owners here to, would like to say anything? He doesn't, I'm sure he would if you had questions for him. So, uh, and as I read through this, uh, I understand that setback was set long time ago in anticipation of railroad, uh, needs. And of course, the railroad isn't anywhere near that now. So I guess that, that's, uh, all just old stuff that they, they did back in the day. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the Order V dash 23 dash 01, vacating a portion of a platted building setback line on certain property located in Aurora Park at 4130 North Harding Avenue and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, Hamburg and a second by Mr. Smith. Uh, and this is a roll call vote, so I'll ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
I have a question.
Certainly.
Are there other properties along that street that would, we should be considering this for also?
There are properties all up and down that street. The, um, Director of Planning and Zoning is looking at how many properties would be interested. Some value that nice setback that creates, you know, nice sightlines. But if enough of them were interested, the city could vacate, the, the city could initiate vacation of the setback. But he's working on looking into that.
Somebody's working on it. Good enough.
That's, that's a good question. But there are only like a handful of properties back there if I remember right. There's, it's not, not a lot, but it's still worth looking at. So, yeah. Very good. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. City clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Jim Benage.
Aye.
And the motion passes six to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. So we already put item D in the consent agenda, so we'll move on to item E. The parcels being considered, these are agreements for annexation of two adjacent parcels located on Webb Road, halfway between 45th and 53rd. These parcels considered for annexation are less than 20 acres and completely surrounded by the City of Bel Air. Kansas statutes allow for a city to annex parcels that meet these requirements. However, there's a process that must be undertaken for unilateral annexation. Consent to annex is much easier and the property owner led, uh, and is property owner led. So the owner of these two parcels is requesting it to be annexed. And the city attorney has met with them and drafted the consent form being considered tonight. Are any questions for the city attorney?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Just, can I get a little more information on just the history of the tax rebate? As you bring them in, is that just something you've historically just worked out with individual homeowners? Or how is that typically done?
So, um, I haven't brought any of the few island annexations, um, prior to these three that we're considering now. Um, I'm not sure how the city handled those. I know that for, um, home incentive programs to get people to build here, we've done tax rebates before. Unilateral annexation, I'm sorry, consensual annexation actually costs the city much less money as far as, um, interests. And so that's why it was a good negotiating tool in this case.
I don't disagree with it. I was just curious if people have. Thank you.
If I understand right, we have to refund that money. They have to pay the tax, then we refund it back.
Correct. Right. It'll be reimbursed if they request the reimbursement.
Right, right.
Is that agreement terminated if they sell the property or does that go with the property?
It, it goes with the property. And we'll change our boundary lines.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the consent to and agreements for annexation for the Bryant Properties and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item F is ordinance annexing incorporating a portion in the boundaries of the City of Bel Air. This item, um, get the right page here. Okay. Upon request of annexation has been approved by the governing body and an ordinance must be passed, bringing the parcels into the city limits. So it's really the same, uh, parcels we just talked about. But now we need to pass an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the annexation of portions of Section 21 dash 26 dash 2E into the corporate limits of the City of Bel Air and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. And, uh, this is a roll call vote, so I'll ask the city clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
And the motion, um, carries five to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to item G. The change order from Pearson's Construction. So this is, there are a few sections of sidewalk next to woodlawn that are requiring retaining walls. And Pearson's has submitted a change order to install a retaining wall. MKEC is here to discuss the needed change and answering questions. I believe Ann is here to answer some questions that I had asked over the weekend, so.
So just kind of to start this off, um, the project team and I met on several occasions looking at the areas where the sidewalk is going around the corner, coming up to the side roads. We looked at all of those areas, the ones that really jumped out as really needing attention and some assistance with the retaining walls are the two that I have presented for you tonight. The mayor did ask about a few other streets and we are currently working with the property owner of Danbury on the north side. He has given preliminary consent to allowing us to grade through that property to make that a nice smoother slope. The others, we feel that we can save the city money, not do retaining walls and have a reasonably smooth slope for the property owners to maintain in perpetuity. And the mayor had also asked about the intersection at 45th. I want to say Quail Ridge. It's not Quail Ridge. It is St. James. I always get that one mixed up. I don't know why. That one I have met with MKEC and instead of putting a retaining wall in, we're going to connect the pipe from Fort under St. James. Still want to say Quail Ridge to the existing pipe that goes further on down 45th to Woodlawn. So once that is, the pipe is put in, then we will put some, we'll also continue the curb and gutter along that section of Woodlawn connected in, and then that will be graded out. So there will not be a need for retaining wall on that. Most of those items are already contained within the Woodlawn. That, we already have, um, line items for that, but we're not, we're still working through that process. MKEC is just wrapping up the design on that so we can get it to the contractor for them to get us a price. So that one will be coming forward to you, but not a retaining wall, a little bit different scenario there.
Is that going to be, that slope's pretty steep. Is that going to be adequate to, to just do regular foliage on?
Yes.
To retain, keep it from eroding?
Yes. Jay, have you looked at the, do you know what the slope will be there once the retaining wall is added? Or I'm sorry, the?
Yes.
It'll be.
That would be preferred. Thank you.
The, the slope, once we put the curb and gutter on, it'll add, the curb will add six inches to the height. And then the slope from there back to where the sidewalk will be, or where the sidewalk is, it'll be something like a six to one slope, five to one slope, which vegetation would grow on a much steeper slope. We usually consider a four to one slope as manageable, comfortable to walk on. Will be flatter than that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Angle Meyer or Ms. Stevens?
I, I, I want to ask how we missed this at the beginning, that we didn't get the right surveys or whatever was needed to, to, to notice that the slopes at these corners were going to be too much.
Okay, we, we didn't miss this. And in fact, at the public meeting, when we had at the end of the concept design, we anticipated quite a bit more, or that wall would be needed in several places. Then when we got into the design and based off of our field surveys, we made a judgment call that we can save some money and not have them. Why we've added them back in, because I think some, some city staff was out there looking during construction and just asked the question. That's when we met on site with staff and with the contractor to discuss that. And we reevaluated what we did and, and like Ann said, everywhere else, we've decided the original call was right to get rid of the wall in this one spot at Odessa on both sides, where there was kind of a borderline of whether or not we should have it or not. And I think the city wanted to go ahead and put it in. So it was something we originally had in there. We took out. And it's kind of borderline. It's not like there is a design standard that we missed or anything like that. It's kind of just a judgment call of what, you know, landowners, some of them will like to have that wall there to have a flatter slope. Some of them may not like the wall at all. It will be an aesthetically pleasing wall and it'll look nice.
What, what would be the slope if you don't put the wall in?
It would be, it would be about a three to one slope, which is still, three to one's kind of the break off for what we call a mowable slope. But I don't want a three to one slope in my front yard, probably. So.
So fairly steep is what.
Yeah, it is. It is a little steep.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
How much retaining wall are we talking about? Like, I, I didn't see anything that like indicated like a number of linear feet. And I was just trying to get an idea. $38,000 seemed kind of expensive for a little retaining wall in somebody's front yard. So I was just trying to get an understanding of like the scale of this project and if the cost is warranted.
I have reviewed that and the unit price, the, the wall is bid per square foot face of wall. That includes what you see and plus the foundation elements as well. The unit price for what the change order is for is higher than we normally see. And, but I think there are several reasons for that. One, it's a rel, it's a relatively small quantity. And if we're talking, I don't remember what the linear feet is, is exactly. We, I think here we, it is 340 square feet of face. But it's, but one reason, the wall is really comparatively long and comparatively not very tall. And there's a certain amount of foundation work that has to some compaction of the grade below. Usually when you have a wall, we bid the wall square foot face. That foundation work is just figured into the price. Here we have a lot more foundation work and a lot less height of the wall itself. So that makes the unit price higher. And it also, according to past bid results, that wall, it includes different kinds of modular block walls. And there are some walls, I call them keystones, a brand name. That's what you see around town on a lot of places. What we're proposing here or what our landscape group wanted here was actually limestone cut block. It's bigger. It will, there are bigger blocks of wall. And what they will do is sometimes you see some of the Keystone blocks where they're smaller blocks. They get knocked off. They actually get stolen. These bigger blocks, they look nicer and will stay in place a lot better.
Could it be done with poured concrete in a form so it looked like brick or something?
For this size of wall, I would probably, it would be more expensive.
Mr. Smith, on page 70 of your packet, it does show the plans for the retaining wall.
I saw the, the engineering drawings, but I'm not an engineer. So I was having a, a little bit of a hard time figuring out what I was looking at with that. So I could tell that it was a plan for the retaining wall, but it really didn't give me, uh, my eye and understanding of how much retaining wall there was going to be. So that's helpful. I guess, you know, hearing that and hearing that the cost is a little typical than higher, that are a little higher than typical, it does make me wonder if we might be better off just treating this as a separate little project and, uh, not doing it as part of the Woodlawn project and just putting it out for bid on our own. If nothing else, we saved the 5% that Pearson's going to charge us. And I don't know if we're actually going to get anything for the Pearson 5% add-on or not.
The 5% add-on is for their management of and oversight of the subcontractor. I would not advise taking, pulling it out of this project. You may save a little bit. But the headache and the staff time, in my opinion, would not equate to the savings, minimal savings that you would find. I don't think we're going to get a significantly cheaper price if we do it on our own because it is such a small quantity.
Okay.
So have we talked with the homeowners about these? We've presented these to the homeowners?
We have specifically talked to the homeowner on the north side.
Okay.
And he does have a flagpole and a small decorative wall around the flagpole. And his response was, I better have a retaining wall here. The, the property owner on the south side, I do not recall specific conversations with. But it's, it's a situation, I, I don't think any one of us in this room is going to want a really steep slope in the front of our yard. I, I always look at projects, if this was my yard, what would I want?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I did have a question about the use of big block wall. So, and it kind of piggybacks on his question about it. Had we talked with the homeowners? Because the big block wall, the big blocks are a lot bigger than your typical landscape retaining wall. So I would be a little concerned. So I would be a little concerned if we didn't have that discussion with the owners, that they might get something they're not expecting, because a big block wall is going to take up quite a bit more room from their front yard than a typical landscape block.
And they aren't really big block, there is actually a brand name called big block wall, that's, you know, four foot by two foot by two foot.
Right.
These blocks are not that big.
Gotcha.
They're just bigger than the, than the, what I call the Keystone, that's just another brand name, but there, you know, those blocks maybe, or something you can pick up in your hand and take with you, or if you're step running on it or standing on it, you could knock off. These are going to be a little bit bigger, but it's still not, it's not big block.
Sure. And as far as my thoughts on whether to take it out of the project or not, I kind of tend to agree with you, Ann, that 5% is really fair for managing a subcontractor and I think it would be kind of difficult to manage a landscaping subcontractor for, again, a pretty small project. I don't think we're going to get much better bid from somebody for such a small wall, so I think it's just the unfortunate situation that we don't have a very much retaining wall to build and that's kind of hurting us on the, the unit price, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
I'm supportive of the project, I wouldn't want that in my front yard, we clearly need to do it, so I appreciate you addressing the cost component, that does make sense to me. What does it look like to maintain this moving forward? If this gets put in over time, it's going to deteriorate, I don't know, hopefully it's not going to deteriorate like, like, you know, a homeowner installed retaining wall that I would put in myself. I imagine this is going to be a lot better and last a lot longer, but as it does deteriorate or, you know, maybe the, a stone falls off, who's responsible for maintaining this?
I, it would be my opinion and Jackie Ty, I guess feel free to step in, but it would be my opinion, it would be the city's responsibility to maintain it because we did install it. If it does become an issue with, with people stealing blocks, knocking blocks, which it shouldn't because we're going with a beefier wall, that would be something that would need to be addressed alternately, maybe with a different type of wall. But that's one of the reasons we went with a little bit beefier type of wall was just because of the maintenance aspect.
No, that's helpful. I know with the sidewalks, it ends up being the homeowner's responsibility to pay for maintenance there and if this was going to be similar, I'd want to make sure that the homeowners knew that as part of their, you know, request to have this wall installed because, you know, forty thousand dollar wall is different than, you know, the hundred and fifty dollars a square sidewalk that I think, you know, we've seen in the past.
That's a good question and since it's on the property owner's side of the sidewalk, it would seem that it would be on the property owner's legal property, not on the city portion of the property and I would think the property owner should be responsible for this once we put it in.
It's going to come down to whether that wall is being installed for the benefit of the city project. If it's benefiting the city sidewalk users and the road, the integrity of other infrastructure that the city's maintaining, then we can take on that responsibility as, you know, as a city interested priority. But if it's the homeowners, if it's solely for the homeowner's benefit and for their quiet enjoyment of their property, typically it does fall on the homeowner to maintain that in the future, so that might be something we want to talk about. The city's always welcome to come in and maintain it for perpetuity.
Let me ask if you could research that a little bit and then draft an opinion for us.
Sure.
One way or the other, since we have something in record of what the opinion is.
Sure.
I appreciate that, thank you. Another question that just dawned on me just a little bit ago while we were talking is construction. I know those sidewalks are already been poured, laid there. They're going to be putting heavy equipment on those sidewalks and breaking them up?
I hope not, they shouldn't. And to me, I think that's probably one thing Pearson has put in their price is, we might nick some of the sidewalk and have to have it replaced. But typically this, the foundations, the footings for here are relatively low, it's not like we have to dig a three foot deep hole for the footing next to the sidewalk, so there really shouldn't be, you know, unless they drop a block on a concrete or on the sidewalk and accidentally break it, which that would be, to me, the contractor's responsibility to replace anyway, so.
Okay, alright, very good, thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm thinking we should table this until we have an opinion on who's going to be responsible for that. That may affect what the homeowners want to do.
I'm kind of thinking the same thing and I think it's a real question. I know it's been addressed about the size of it not being easily carried off, but we've had an uptick in graffiti and things like that, I'm thinking along those lines too, so I think I'd like to do the same.
Do we have a motion?
So I will make a motion to, to table the change order request from Pearson Construction in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars for retaining walls in the northeast and southeast corners of Woodlawn and Odessa and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I will sign the documents to table it.
With you.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Most of my business has, Hamburg and a second by Mr. Welch.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
Just a question on the opinion, I thought what I heard Jackie say is that the city always has the ability to come in and fund the maintenance of this type of initiative, so there's not a question on whether the city can fund it, so I just want to make sure that my understanding is correct and that what we're asking the opinion on is whether the city is obligated to fund it. Is that, is that correct?
That is exactly what I was asking, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification though, yes. Okay, we have a motion to table this item. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of tabling, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. The motion carries five to zero. Now we're ready for item 14, executive session. Do we want to take a recess before these executive sessions, these are going to be a little bit long, but in total maybe an hour, maybe hour fifteen minutes in total to, to executive sessions.
I'll make a motion for a seven minute recess, five never seems enough.
Okay.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Smith for five, a seven minute recess, any, and I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Recession, motion carries five to zero and recess for seven minutes.
I want to call the meeting back to order. We held seven minute recess and next item on the agenda is executive session and I believe Ms. Hamburg is going to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of consulting with attorney regarding municipal utility obligations under attorney-client privilege pursuant to KSA 75-4319, exception for the same. Invite the city manager, assistant city manager, the city attorney, Ken Lee, Jeff White and Kevin Cowan in. The meeting will be for a period of thirty minutes and the open meeting will resume at eight thirty in city council chambers.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg and a second by Mr. Dean.
I'm sorry, can we amend that motion to just include Ken Lee and not Jeff White and Kevin Cowan? I apologize, that was my mistake.
Yeah, no problem. So I'm going to amend it to remove Jeff White.
Jeff White and Kevin Cowan.
And Kevin Cowan. So no Jeff White and Kevin Cowan invited is my amendment.
I'll second my amendment.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Our executive session for thirty minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. We held executive session with no binding action taken, and I think we have a motion for another executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean.
A motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of preliminary contract negotiations under attorney-client privilege pursuant to the KSA 75-4319 exception for attorney-client privilege. Invite the city manager, assistant city manager, the city attorney, Kevin Cowan, and Jeff White. The meeting will be for a period of 30 minutes, and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 9:05 PM.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes same sign, our executive session for 30 minutes.
Thank you.
...
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session and no binding action was taken. And I think we're ready to move on to item 15. Anyone have additional items to discuss or future issues mentioned? And I do have one, and I just want to ask city manager to, ask somebody to put this on their radar. As I was driving down Woodland this earlier today, I see that they're starting to do that credit union project. They're putting in a lot of dirt in there. They're building it up higher than the sidewalk. So it looks like we may have an obsolete sidewalk already. I don't know what we can do about it because it is City Wichita, but it's something to look at to say, what's happening here and what do we need to do, if anything? Okay? Any other things we need to discuss? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Welch. Second by Mr. David. Call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nice, same sign. We're adjourned. Motion carries five